Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners July 17th meeting. To order, we've got Commissioner Yoder going to give us our invocation and Commissioner Lael the pledge of allegiance.
Would stand please. Our county most gracious, we appreciate the opportunity that we're able to gather together in the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting. We appreciate the folks that come and attend these meetings, be with them as they travel back to their residence. We'd ask you to be with our first responders and those folks who respond to the tragic incident that occurred Saturday night, be with the family who lost a loved one, be with those first responders to bring them peace and look after them, after that quick response and taking care of the family and taking care of the scene. And we did ask you to be with all of our highway patrol, law enforcement personnel, our firemen, be with them, lead them and guide them and bring them some peace. Also be with our state, local and federal governments and throughout the world, be with those leaders in those countries to bring peace throughout the world. For we ask this in thy name, amen.
Amen. Face back please.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda is presented.
Second. All in favor? Does any commissioners have any reports that they'd like to go over? I'm going to make a statement in regards to our recent flooding and loss of life in Alexander County. It wasn't too long ago that we lost multiple lives due to flooding. I do want to ask our county manager if he would to look in and see, I cannot remember this, so it's when we had the flooding a couple of years ago. Could you check to see if DOT had engineers to come in and look at different low lying areas on our roadways and bridges and culverts and things of that nature?
Sure.
And if so, bring that back in front of the board. Loss of life is serious. I know we live in a small county and you know, everybody's probably got Facebook, social media and stuff and I didn't make any comments or anything out there. I do that very rarely. But I did see comments of people, you know, making fun of, you know, a little bit of rain, a little bit of flood and then also statements of the nuisance it was to receive flood warnings at 12 o'clock at night, 1:00 a.m. So I just want to say that as a reminder that if those warnings go out, there's a real risk. It's not just to irritate people and wake them up from sleeping. A family or you know, multiple families have been affected by this and just from my seat, I think it'd be a great gesture to pay attention to what you put out there on social media because even though you think it's funny or whatever you want to call it, it has affected a family for a lifetime. So moving along, item number one tonight, well, public comment, no one signed up, so that was pretty quick. Item number two, we have a public hearing, Community Development Block Grant Economic Development, Paragon Films, be presented by Mr. Ben Willis, I believe. Mr. Willis.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. My name-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Willis.
Yes.
Hold on just one moment.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor? My apologies, sir.
No, my fault. Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for having me today, three months to the date, actually, to the very date. I was here in front of you to do a CDBG grant and we are basically approving, that was for the Sterling Road project. And basically what we're doing is we're applying for another CDBG grant for the Paragon Films. And in part of the CDBG application process, we have to approve the same plans that we approved exactly three months ago, but we're just applying those plans to this application. So basically we're changing Sterling Road to Paragon Film because this is a separate application. So all of the documents in your packet that you have are, the various plans are going to go along with this application for the Paragon Film project. And those are from the relocation plans, the 519 certification, code of conduct, there's 13 different plans in there. You have the LAP plan, which is a language access plan, housing assistance policy and analysis of impediments plan. These are all plans that you have, you as a county have already adopted and already, and all we're doing is applying those in a public hearing to this application. So I'm not going to read over all these because we sort of did that three months ago and unless you want me to or if you have any questions with regards to this. We've progressed with this, we've gone, we're in the middle of doing the environmentals for this project and we're waiting on a 60-day comment period so we can proceed and move forward. So I would ask the board if you have any questions. If not, I would hope that you could, would be able to accept the plans that you've previously adopted, except for this project. Any questions?
Sounds good to me. Thanks, sir. Any discussion?
This is another project to benefit Alexander County. Paragon Films is a large corporation here that has provided jobs and one of, if not, the largest taxpayer in Alexander County and this is a good, good project for them and I think this will totally benefit the citizens of Alexander County. Good project.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I would, I would add to Commissioner Yoder's comments. We as a board, anytime there is a, anytime there's a public match on a grant, which means Alexander County has to put some small, you know, some amount of money toward the project, you know, to make, to make the grant happen. One thing I would say is we look at those things very seriously and we look at the return to the county. We just, we have discussed this as a board, as we, as we always do. And especially in this situation, you know, the very, the small amount of money that we have to invest for the long-term benefit to the county economically, both in creating jobs as well as creating tax revenue for, for the county. This is a good one.
Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Do I have a motion that we close the public hearing?
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Do I have a motion to approve the attached resolutions and plans for the Community Development Block Grant Economic Development?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve and/or adopt the Community Development Block Grant Economic, through the Economic Development Corporation for Paragon Films as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Moving along, item number three, NC opioid settlement funding overview and port community paramedic program, given by David Moose, compliance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Sigmund, possibly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Tonight, I want to bring you a brief update about the North Carolina opioid settlement funding and how it impacts Alexander County, as well as a little bit of a review of some of the strategies that a planning committee we've been working with is recommending to the board to fund. My presentation will be followed up by EMS Director Jeff Sigmund tonight to bring you more detail about one specific strategy that we're looking to fund immediately pending board approval. So a little bit of background about the opioid settlement funding. In July of 2021, North Carolina Attorney General Josh Stein announced a historic $26 billion agreement that was reached with several pharmaceutical distributors and drug makers to resolve litigation that was brought by state and local governments. North Carolina joined in on that litigation and their share of the national settlement is being distributed to both state and local governments, which joined in on the litigation through the North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement. That includes all 100 counties in North Carolina, as well as a number of municipalities. Alexander County's share of what we will receive, which is allocated as 85% of that settlement amount going to local governments, 15% going to the state. Alexander County's share now totals almost $6 million. And that is an increase from the last time I presented anything about this opioid settlement funding. That is due to a second wave of litigation settlement funding that's coming in and there's a potential for additional funding as well. That money is paid out over 18 years as a structured settlement payment and as I said earlier, additional settlement waves may increase that amount. Just to give you an idea of the current amount of funding is shown there on the screen, $5,935,178 coming to Alexander County over the course of 18 years. We have received to date 439,000 as of June of 2023. That is the first year payment. We are expecting, based off of the dashboard showing on your screen there, the settlement payment, to receive an additional $811,000 during this fiscal year, with a total roughly at the end of fiscal year '24 of $1,237,485. So what can we do with the money? It is limited. There are some eligible uses for the funding. All uses of the settlement funding must comply with the North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement. They must fund one or more high-impact opioid abatement strategies, which are listed in either Exhibit A or Exhibit B, which is also referred to as Option A or Option B, to that memorandum of agreement. Option A is a shorter list of 12 strategies, which requires no further strategic planning for local governments to be able to fund those strategies. Option B is a longer, more comprehensive list of strategies, but it also requires that the local government go through a comprehensive strategic planning process. There also are stringent reporting requirements and the MOA requires local governments to report on the funding for purposes, or we can't use the funding for purposes other than what's listed in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Next slide. So Alexander County staff are recommending that we go with Option A abatement strategies. That's the shorter list of 12 strategies, which you see on your screen here. You can read through those for yourself, but we've selected three of these strategies to initially recommend funding for. Next slide. The Alexander County Health Department, a number of years ago, created the Substance Use Coalition, or Substance Abuse Coalition, I think at the time it was called, but it's currently called the Substance Use Disorder Coalition. When COVID hit, things kind of stopped with that and so in early 2022, following the end of COVID and the pandemic, that was sort of reinstated. But it is a multidisciplinary collaborative, which is formed and headed up by the Alexander County Public Health, with representation from various county departments, different staff, area mental health providers, Alexander County Schools representatives, Town of Taylorville representatives, area clergy, community volunteers and persons with lived experience. And so when the opioid settlement funding was brought to my attention a while back, I asked Rick French, our manager at the time, if we could use the Substance Use Disorder Coalition as a steering committee, since it was more or less following that strategic planning process. And so he agreed to do that. And so I've worked with that SUD Coalition since that time to help us to guide recommendations to the board for specific strategies with which to fund with the opioid settlement funding. Next slide. So what were the challenges that were identified by the SUD Coalition? As a result of the collaborative process, we basically went through a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, if you don't know what SWOT stands for. But it's a collaborative process and several primary challenges were identified through that process. Those included things like a lack or a fewer substance use and mental health counseling resources in Alexander County. The availability of transportation options was identified as a barrier for many people to be able to access the resources and care that is in Alexander County. Also for those at risk of overdose, the cost of naloxone, or also known as Narcan, can be a challenge, not only for county departments and first responders to maintain stockpiles of, but the health department is also able to distribute that to community members and it can be very expensive and hard to find. So that was a challenge as well. And then lastly, there was a lack of post-overdose follow-up care that being provided to overdose patients, which connects them to long-term care and recovery services. So those were the challenges that we identified. Next, we looked at what solutions we could use and leverage the opioid settlement funding to try and address these challenges. Some of the suggestions that came out of that coalition were to develop protocols for post-overdose response to provide follow-up care for overdose patients, and you'll hear more on that tonight about the Port Community Paramedic. Also to increase early intervention efforts in schools, providing additional substance use prevention education, which would supplement the existing DARE program, looking at adding an educational component, possibly in the middle school and the high school, and that also is something that the community paramedic position can help fulfill. Also, we looked at solutions to increase access to transportation options for persons in recovery, as well as access to existing resources in and around Alexander County. And lastly, to increase the availability of services targeting substance use disorder So what are our next steps? We've gone through the strategic planning process. We've identified the challenges, we've identified some strategies we can fund. The next step for the board would be to, after hearing the information tonight, consider approving a resolution authorizing the allocation of opioid settlement funding to one or more of the eligible strategies found in Exhibit A. Of those recommended programs and activities, we are recommending currently three strategies. The first is an adult drug treatment court program. That is an alternative court program. We're still in development, working with stakeholders and a subcommittee group to finalize the details on that program, so you'll hear more about that at a later time. But that fits under Option A Strategy Number Three. Also, we're looking at funding for acquisition of naloxone. That is something that fits under Option A Strategy Number Seven. And lastly, for now, we're looking at funding a port or post-overdose response team, community paramedic program, which falls under Option A Strategy Eight, which is what you'll hear about tonight. Staff are required to report annually on the uses of the funding and the impact of the strategies that are implemented and additional resolutions are going to be required to be approved later on to authorize continued funding for whatever is approved now, as well as any additional strategies that you choose to approve funding for. So with that, do you have any questions specific to the opioid settlement funding? And as I mentioned earlier, if the board chooses to take action tonight, there is a resolution prepared that can be done tonight or we can do that at a later meeting as well. There will have to be additional actions taken in the form of a budget amendment to move the money over once the resolution is approved. And just a little plug for the Substance Use Disorder Coalition, we meet every third Tuesday at the Health Department, so anyone in the public is welcome to attend. We'd love to have you. So with that, I'll turn it over to EMS Director Jeff Sigmund.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for giving me the opportunity to come before you tonight, although myself and Substance Use Disorder Coalition, or SUDS Coalition, for short, believes will be a great asset to the citizens of Alexander County and this will be at no cost to the taxpayers due to the opioid settlement. During our SUDS meeting, as we looked at the best ways to utilize the funding, myself and David Moose spoke with two well-established programs, which is Stanley County and Colwell County. We visited Colwell County's Port Community Paramedic Division and gained useful information, such as what worked for their program. We feel the option, the Port Paramedic Program, will be very beneficial to Alexander County. After multiple meetings, we started to pursue the Port Community Paramedic and began working on protocols and job descriptions and everything. So just a little history of, sorry about that, just a little history of the opioid crisis, no age is excluded in this. The young and old are impacted a lot. According to the CDC, the number of drug overdose deaths increased by 500% in 1999. From 2019 to 2020 alone, there's been nearly 30% increase. Almost 75% of the drug overdose deaths in 2020 involved opioids. Next slide. As you see here, there have been three waves of opioid overdose deaths. The first wave began with increased prescribed opioids in the late 1990s. The second wave began in 2010 with a rapid increase in overdose deaths involving heroin. The third wave began in 2013 with significant increases in overdose deaths involving synthetic opioids, particularly those involving illicitly manufactured fentanyl. This drug here is one of our biggest problems. Fentanyl is a synthetic opioid that is 50 times stronger than heroin and 100 times stronger than morphine. Fentanyl is a major contributor to both fatal and non-fatal overdoses in the United States. It is often added to other drugs because of its extreme potency, which makes drugs cheaper, more powerful, more addictive and most of all, more dangerous. As we look at the map of the United States, overdose deaths surged during the first year of COVID, increasing by just over 30% in 12 months. The growth was widespread throughout the country, with 40 states experiencing staggering increases in overdose death rates from 2019 to 2020. As you can see here, North Carolina increased between 20 and 40%. So we've touched on the United States and North Carolina. Now let's take a look at our numbers in our own county. This graph shows our dispatched EMS calls for overdoses from 2016 to current. In 2016, we were dispatched to 60 overdose calls. 2017, 61. In 2018, 69. 2019, 59. In 2020, 62. And in 2021, during our peak of COVID, we run 91 overdoses. In 2022, 90. This year alone, in 2023, with this month being the midway point, we have already surpassed years 2016 through 2020. So far, we are at 70 overdoses, with the prediction to exceed well over 120 if this So as we look at our county map, this problem is not isolated to one area of our county. It affects all the communities in our county. Since January of 2022 to present, our SUDS Coalition has been compiling data and along with Billy and Mallory from our coalition, keeps our map and everything updated. This map shows our overdoses in yellow, which is 160, and our overdose deaths in red, at 21. All this has been in the last 16 and a half months. To me, this is real eye-opening to the problem we have in our county. So you may be asking yourself what a Port Community Paramedic is. PORT stands for Post-Overdose Response Team. This is a post-overdose follow-up program that allows the Port Paramedic to visit the person who has experienced an overdose within 24 to 72 hours. The Port Paramedic provides support through multiple avenues and access to evidence-based treatment. They provide services for harm reduction, education on substance use prevention, supplies such as Narcan, referrals to detox and inpatient treatment facilities, and access to mental health services. Most importantly, support and care for these patients. People that have experienced an overdose are more likely to experience another one. Port Programs provide individuals with information and resources they need to improve their health and safety. What I have just spoke about is only the tip of what this program can offer to the citizens of Alexander County. Disposition will start off being eight to five, Monday through Friday, with some nights and weekends as needed. The Port Paramedic will perform follow-ups on all overdose patients, either during regular working hours or within 24 to 72 hours, when referred by emergency responders outside of scheduled port hours. The citizens of our county will benefit through education for local schools and civic organizations. These educations, the education will include substance abuse prevention, referrals to mental health clinics. As this program continues to grow, Alexander County can provide community outreach, risk assessments and prevention care resources. The startup cost of this position will be $202,000. This includes salaries plus benefits, uniforms, specialty service vehicles, such as the one that our supervisor drives, it'll be outfitted, radio equipment, all the medical equipment and supplies, computers, office supplies, and all this is at no cost to the taxpayers. So we ask ourselves, why does this matter? You know, each one of us knows or have family members that has been impacted by addiction. We have families torn apart and experienced the pain of a loved one's death. EMS has witnessed this firsthand. With our county's highest percentage of known overdoses being between the ages of 24 and 40, they also have children attending our schools. The Port Program will help us to battle the overdose epidemic plaguing our county. Through lifetime recovery goals, our children will have more stable homes, a promise for tomorrow, and a lesser chance of substance abuse disorder. Our future really depends on this. And I will end this with one, with many of, you know, one of many success stories. I spoke with one of my friends this morning from Colwell County EMS and he was telling me about a guy that's been addicted to drugs for many years, 35 years to be exact. And they have dealt with this guy numerous, numerous times and you know, he had always refused and didn't want any help. And a couple of weeks ago, a preacher called him and asked if he could send somebody down to talk to him. So they sent the community paramedic out to talk to him, the Port Division. And you know, the guy was willing to get help and everything and referred him and got him into a, he's in a year-long, you know, treatment program right now to, and is doing great. So we do have a problem, you know, in our county. I mean, our number shows it and I would love to see this, you know, program, you know, take off, if y'all would allow.
I have a question.
Please.
Out of the possible 100 calls that were slated for this year, how many of those do you reckon in your previous years, kind of just hypothetical, would you think that children would be involved in?
We do have children and from what, all the records that I have pulled is 18 and up. We did not, I did not pull any statistics on anybody 18 years or below the age of 18 years, but yes, I can tell you that we do, we do run minors.
Another question, and this might be something for, we've got our superintendent present tonight, so open up the comment to-
tonight, so open up the comment to ones attending here. In information through the school systems and making awareness and all that, is that, I saw where it said middle school, high school, so is that a certain grade in both of those? Is that broad across the board, or is that?
Yes, I mean.
The type of criteria to get into that?
With, like with Billy, you know, we, during our coalition and everything, we spoke about this, you know, numerous times. And, you know, we got Darren, you know, like 4th grade, and we'd like to do another one like 8th and 10th grade, you know, the older ages. You know, because this is a real problem, I mean, you know, as far as the vaping and, you know, everything that they're doing now.
Mr. Chairman, I would say, I mean, I knew, I mean, I'd been told fentanyl, I mean, is.
Fentanyl's bad.
Ridiculously bad. I'm bad to watch TV late at night on, you know, Discovery or one of those channels that has stuff where they're like busting people for drugs, bringing them, you know, bringing them into airports and, you know, bringing them across the border and, you know, just, you know, these kind of things where, because, but anyway. But one thing that I, one thing I'd heard that stuck with me was the amount of fentanyl powder, which I think it can come in different forms, you know, but the amount of fentanyl powder that is equal to the amount of Sweet'N Low in one packet. So, one packet of Sweet'N Low is enough fentanyl for, to overdose and kill 500, over 500 people.
It's very potent. That's what they use to cut all these drugs.
I mean, that's.
Put in to cut these drugs.
And, you know, and, I mean, you know, most of you know, we have adopted children, and two of our children's birth mothers have overdosed and died in the past two years. And some of our children, some of our children, we, you know, are our children because of, you know, because of this. I mean, that's why they were taken from their, you know, their birth parents to begin with. So, it does, it does affect way more people than just the people that are, you know, that are using.
Right.
You know, that are using it. And so, in my opinion, anything that can be done, you know, to reduce the use is going to have a much broader effect than, you know, hopefully it'll save a life, but it's going to have a much broader effect than just that person, you know, that is actually, you know, using the drug.
And then, are we gonna, you know, reach everybody? No, we're not. But one or two, I mean, if we, if we save one or two lives, you know, we've got to do something, you know, to turn the curve.
And not, not that this, not, you know, not to be, be negative, but we know that we're, you know, we know that we're never going to get rid of it, but any reduction is going to be very beneficial, not only to our community, but to our DSS, you know, to our Department of Social Services, to our Health Department, you know. Like I say, I think, it's my opinion, it's a great idea.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind to walk us through how the Community Paramedic position would actually work?
It will work, it will be an 8 to 5, Monday through Friday position. And they will go out, well, first of all, once we get it off the ground, they will do, they will respond on every drug overdose that we respond to, either in real time, whichever, like whenever the call's dispatched, or within 24 to 72 hours. And what we will do, our EMS folks that runs these, our primary 911 trucks, they will send them a message, you know, they'll get the information from the patient, send them, send the Community Paramedic a message to go out and visit with them, either, you know, touching bases with them, first of all, by phone call, asking, you know, to meet with them, go out, give them all the literature that they need, you know, as far as, you know, possibly getting help, refer them to places, RHA or, you know, the addiction clinic. Also, just to be there, you know, for support, just to let them know that, you know, there's somebody, you know, that cares about them, cares enough to come out and talk with them. And also, along with all the public education, you know, teaching in the schools and our civic organizations, whether it be, you know, a private school or whatever, you know, we can, you know, go out and do education there. But, and right now, and we're going to have to build this position, you know, pretty much from the ground up. All these other counties already had their Community Paramedic, you know, in place before this opioid settlement come, and that's what they used a lot of their opioid settlement money for, was to, you know, build on to their Community Paramedic program.
So, the Community Paramedic would be, like, they would not be involved until it was like a follow-up from.
Right.
Being designated or tagged, I guess.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
And it was brought to my attention that this was a front-loaded, where a lot of monies were coming in the first few years, so I assumed that the monies that we didn't need the first few years would be saved for future down-the-line use. Mr. Moose, I guess?
Yes. Yeah, so that's, that's correct. The payment schedule is very front-loaded, but even, even with that payment schedule, we don't drop below $300,000 annually until fiscal year 33, 34. So, with that second wave of funding, that has dramatically increased the amount of funding that we will receive upfront. And so, what, what will happen is that money will just build, along with the interest that's earned and can be used for funding this strategy, any other strategies that we approve that are being recommended soon, or any additional strategies that we want to fund in the future. So, it is a long-term amount of funding. It doesn't go away, per se, once we've received it, it just sits there in the bank until we can utilize it.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like a good thing to me, and anytime we can get out in front of something a little bit, you know, I'm all for that. And I think just this person being in the community backing up and people seeing that, you know, somebody cares, just as Mr. Sigmund was telling us, you know, that's a whole lot of the, of the thing. And if we can use opioid money for this, I think it, you know, sounds good to me.
We've got a resolution here prepared that I'm going to ask our county manager to read, and then pleasure the board.
I need to ask one more question. You go out and you do all these things and you talk to these people, and they decide they want to get treatment, because you know and I know, anybody that's addicted, they're not going to, they're not going to come out of it or do anything until they want to do it. It doesn't matter to me how much pressure, how tight you tighten their arms, or put their arm behind their back, or whatever. How are these people going to pay for their treatments? Because you know and I know, the treatments for opioid and these drug rehab centers, I mean, you're looking at $35,000 to $40,000 a month.
Exactly.
Or more. And that's very difficult for these people, and a lot of them will not take insurance. They want this, they don't care about the insurance.
Exactly. But I was speaking with the manager from RHA the other day, and they've got 380 active, you know, mental health and substance abuse patients, you know, in our county right now. We will refer, as far as paying, I mean, we, I mean, that, that's not up to disposition.
I understand that, but my question is, how are you going to deal with that, with that patient, to let them know or to give them guidance, or to take?
Right.
So, how they can get the funding to be able to do that? Because I think that's an important part.
Yes.
Of the whole thing. The education part, getting in front of it's the biggest thing.
Right.
You know, but, I mean, it doesn't care whether you're rich or poor, famous or infamous, Christian or non-Christian, it don't care, it doesn't matter who you are.
Exactly.
You get that first high, and you'll be looking for it the rest of your life, and you're never going to get that high like you did the first time, I don't care how many times you take it.
Right.
You know, that first one's the best one, well, that's terrible to say, but based on the way this works.
Oh, yeah.
The opioid, I mean, the way it affects the people the first time, that's why they get addicted.
Right.
They continue to look for that same high they got, and that's why I asked the question.
But there is a lot of faith-based, you know, treatment centers. A lot of the churches help here in the county. I do know of several churches that helps these people out. But you're exactly right. I mean, addiction is a terrible thing. None of us, none of us in here is excluded, you know, from addiction. I mean, it takes one injury. I've had friends, and we've all, you know, had people, you know, that's had injuries, start taking, you know, pain pills and everything, and they, and you're right, it just keeps on going and going.
And I will give the medical profession credit. When your gentleman came down the other night and took me over for my kidney stone, I will give him credit. The first time I ever had a kidney stone, they gave me a bottle of it, okay? You know? And this time, they gave me four. I mean, you know, and so, they are doing a better job than what they'd been doing for a long time, and the medical professionals are adhering to what this did. And one thing I want to throw out there also, so the public will know, and you guys, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners were the lead in this lawsuit against all this opioid, and then the state government started stepping in. But the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, along with other commissioners across the country, were real emphatic and did a really good job of getting on top of this thing and following that lawsuit right off the bat. They did a good job of it, and I want to give the hats off to the association because they did a good job.
Yeah, and I want to say, we've reached out numerous times to the NCACC. They have been a tremendous resource and continue to do that in helping us navigate how to use this funding and how to do the reporting and all that stuff, so I can't say thank you enough to them.
Thank you, fellas.
Thank you.
If you would go ahead and make forward reading.
Be glad to. A resolution by the County of Alexander to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds. Whereas Alexander County has joined national settlement agreements with companies engaged in the manufacturing, distribution, and dispensing of opioids. Whereas the allocation use and reporting of funds stemming from these national settlement agreements and certain bankruptcy solutions are governed by the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments. Whereas Alexander County has received opioid settlement funds pursuant to these national settlement agreements and deposited the opioid settlement funds in a separate special revenue fund as required by Section D of the MOA. Whereas Section E6 of the MOA states, processes for drawing from special revenue funds, Item A, budget item or resolution required, opioid settlement funds can be used for a purpose when the governing board, governing body includes in its budget or passes a separate resolution authorizing the expenditure of a stated amount of opioid settlement funds for that purpose or the purposes during a specified time period. B, budget item or resolution details, the budget or resolution should indicate that it is an authorization for expenditures of opioid settlement funds, state the specific strategies or strategies that the county or municipality intends to fund pursuant to Option A or B. Now, therefore, be it resolved in alignment with the North Carolina MOA, Alexander County authorizes expenditure of opioid settlement funds as follows. Number one, first strategy authorized, name of strategy, post-overdose response team. Strategy is included in Exhibit A, authorized for this strategy, $202,000. Period of time which expenditure may take place, July 1st, 2023 through end date, June 30th, 2024. Description of the program, the post-overdose response team, Community Paramedic, will provide initial response and follow-up care to patients who have experienced a non-fatal drug overdose in order to connect them to resources for addiction treatment, recovery support, harm reduction services, primary health care, and other services and support they may need to improve their health or well-being. Item G, provider, the Port Community Paramedic will be provided through Alexander County Emergency Medical Services, the Department of Alexander County Government. And I will make two notes, if I may. One, this resolution is for one year. That is something that the team did discuss, that we would revisit this along with the other strategies annually. So, this is only authorizing these funds to be spent for one year, and I think that's important as we reevaluate each year and how effective each one of these solutions are being. So, this is a one-year resolution for the $202,000 for the Port Paramedic program. And then, secondly, I would like to just say thank you to the individuals that have been a part of the SUDS group, that have been working for several years now to get to this point, and I think this is a great first step in moving forward with the Port Program.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as read for the Port Community Paramedic Program?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Second. All in favor? Thank you, fellas. Item number four, board appointees and reappointments delivered by Board Clerk Jamie Starnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several appointments for tonight. Court House Committee appoint Shane Fox, County Manager, Western Piedmont Council of Governments, Uni4 Home Consortium, also appoint Shane Fox, who is fulfilling an unexpired term that ends 10, 2024. The VAIR Region 3 Board appoint Shane Fox. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council appoint Caitlin Gansrow as a Health Department Representative, Consolidated Human Services Advisory Committee. Two new appointments, Chris House and Vicky Rogers for three years. Also, reappoint Barbara Hayes, Dr. Richard Williams, Dr. Jennifer Hall, Betty Long, Macy Jones, Doug Howes, Philip Sprinkle, and Crystal Adams.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the appointments as read by the board.
Second.
Who was that?
Second.
All in favor? You've had a chance to look over the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given in our packets.
Second.
All in favor? We have a manager's report to be given by County Manager Shane Fox.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to start with just an update in our building inspections. You will see some things coming out in the next few weeks. Our long-anticipated software program is being trained on currently, so that is not only building inspections, that's our planning and zoning, emergency services, environmental health, but SmartGov software is here and is being trained on. And over the next few weeks, you'll see some information, including unusual lease that gives some details, shows the friendliness of the program itself. But overall, I wanted just to brag a little bit, did receive an annual report from Mr. Bill Rogers, who couldn't be here tonight. Overall inspections for this past fiscal year were just shy of 3,900 inspections. That's up from 3,500 last year to over 400 inspections increase. The biggest number he would like for me to point out here tonight was the fail rate this past year was 3.3%. It had been 11.5% in the previous year, and I think that is a testament to the customer service of those individuals in our Building Inspection Department, making sure that not only are they outperforming the duties in which they're charged to do so, but they're also providing that above and beyond level of customer service with those individuals performing those inspections. That being said, one quick story I'd like to share, if I may, that took place just a few weeks ago. One of our building inspectors, Brian Davis, went out to do a regular propane furnace inspection, and upon arriving at the house, when the individual, who was a teenager, opened the door, he smelled propane and immediately had that individual leave the house. Who was, at the time, home alone, called the fire department, did call 911. And 911, our emergency services folks were dispatched, and we did find when we were there indeed a gas leak that had been occurring for quite some time. And so, just want to make sure, I'd say thank you to Brian Davis, publicly say thank you to him and Mr. Rogers and the entire staff for going above and beyond and truly potentially saving a life in this scenario, just going through their typical day-to-day procedures. So, thank you to Mr. Davis, and thank you to all of our individuals involved in that particular situation. Do want to take just a few minutes and go through just a quick update on some of our projects we have going on. I'm not sure when's the last time you've heard an update, but I'll give you a quick update here of about eight projects that we have currently going on within the county. One that's not county-driven, but obviously will impact our county, is the Highway 127 widening project. I had a chance to meet with Mark Stafford, who's our Division 12 engineer, last week. Even though final plans have not been approved, they're still working on some median turnarounds and a potential additional signal. They are moving forward and expect right-of-way acquisitions to start this coming March, March 2024, construction March 2026, and construction timeline's about three years. So, with all things being held equal, the construction should be completed sometime in 2029, but that project is moving forward. I think we did have a public meeting some months ago, and they are modifying the plan somewhat, but they do expect to have final plans within the next few months and move forward with the right-of-way in 2024. Our Alexander Housing Our Alexander Housing, our teachers project, that's our old chamber building that the county owns, building use grant for $650,000. Our contractors had a chance to do a walkthrough on July 6th and 12th. We do have bid opening, bid solicitation right now currently underway, and we plan to open those bids on August the 11th. And as long as we receive the adequate three bids, we plan on bringing those bids to you for consideration at the September Board of Commissioners meeting. Bowman Court Project is moving forward. Survey work is complete, waiting on some additional tax amendments that may be coming from our planning and zoning to you guys just in the next month or so before we finalize and move forward with the bids. But bid possibility there is in the fall or early winter of 2023. Waterline Extension Project, this is our ARPA money, the $7.3 million, 42,000 linear feet of waterline, 12 different areas of construction, about 60% final phase design right now, still working on some pressure issues. That project, along with the Bethlehem Water Tank Project, are working closely together with identifying the pressure issues. The Bethlehem Water Tank Project's going to require a pump station, additional pump station, in a different location than it is now to help pump to the, to the water tank, but also to help levelize some of the pressure issues that are currently happening within the Bethlehem community. So those two projects are working together with each other, and both will expect to go to bid later this year. Our GREAT Grant, which is our broadband and fiber to the phone, fiber to the home project, is moving forward, and hopefully we'll see some activity within the next month or two. They are working in Iredo County right now, moving this direction. And then our Bethlehem Park Project is still in the design phase, but hopefully we'll have that finalized and to bid later this year. Our Courthouse Project is in the beginning stages, the programming phases of that, and we're scheduled to meet with Jenkins Pier, which is the firm that you selected several months ago, with our Courthouse Committee Project the first week of August to have some initial discussions about timeline, et cetera, of what that is going to look like. My last piece I would like to bring and kind of echo some of the comments that were made earlier. Tragic event Saturday night and the Sunday morning that took place in the Ellendale community. We'll say that all the roads have been opened back up as of today. We did have a number of roads that were washed out. Tragically, we did have one individual that was killed that was mentioned earlier, and prayers to the family. I would like to say we had a great collaborative effort of 15 agencies that responded, over 75 individuals. So I would say thank you to the Alexander County Sheriff, Chad Pennell and his staff, the emergency services of Alexander County, Alexander County EMS, Alexander Rescue Squad, the fire departments of Ellendale, Hiddonite, Bethlehem, Sugarloaf, Taylorsville, and Wittenberg, and Little River from Caldwell County, all responded to the scene and assisted in the search. North Carolina Highway Patrol, North Carolina Forestry Services, Taylorsville PD, and the North Carolina DOT. So thank you to all the individuals and all the agencies that assisted in the search and recovery Saturday into Sunday. They'll be happy to answer any questions.
Sounds good. Good information. Appreciate that report.
Thanks, sir. We're going to go into closed session now. We will only come back into open to adjourn. Per 143-3118, 1185 and 6 contractual and personnel, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?